Good evening, everybody.
Directly into the microphone. There you go. There you go.
Welcome to the October ninth planning commission. Can I go call please?
Commissioner Krieger.
Here.
Commissioner Halleck.
President.
Commissioner Rosner.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Hayward.
Here.
Chairman Jackshot. Thank you. The United States of America to the Republic which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Dino, City Manager. Quick update for the U.N., the public. We had reached agreement with the City Council in closed session on an exclusive negotiating agreement with a development team for our 235 acre parcel on Forma Four Or. That partnership on the other side dissolved over the past couple of weeks and we were very disappointed. We invested a lot of time and energy into negotiating with them, but they were unable to reach business agreement amongst themselves. As a result, we have marketed the property and this flyer is available on the city website and it has been shared with various development teams to begin to try to find the right developer to move forward with. So I want to give you that update. And then as it relates to the housing element, we had a very productive call this morning with the Housing and Community Development Department in Sacramento. An initial review, a phone call with Denise Duffin Associates about the housing element. They gave us a lot of good feedback. Denise and her team have some work to do to make those corrections. Our goal is to turn that in a week back to Sacramento for subsequent reviews. We're making good progress on the housing.
Good afternoon, quick question.
Yes.
So just to clarify, we, you'll go back and forth, we won't say again until it comes back officially, is that the way it works?
Right.
So like Denise and me just go back to, at this point, is it like working level back and forth?
Yeah, it's iterative, exactly. It's iterative until it comes back to council, which hopefully will be in November.
Okay, thanks.
And Dino, I want one other question. So when we met as a planning commission before, there was some discussion and some questions. Did they address those issues and questions that we identified during that time?
They took all those notes and they are certainly addressing them. I don't know that all of the changes or suggestions are necessarily going to be embodied in that, in the revision. So I don't want to promise that, but they were definitely taking copies.
Yes, as long as they're taking it into consideration, I guess is the key.
Dino, if you want to interrupt, does anybody in the audience have a question for the city manager about the addition? Thank you. Okay, item number five, building activity report. You have any questions? Item number six, we have a whole business, there is none. And so there are new business, unfortunately I have to step down, so I'm sure people will note that.
And I typically don't do this, so after I'll be.
Talk in the mic, that's what I mean.
Talk in the mic. Talk into the mic.
So I guess we need, this is agenda item number seven, eight. Applicant for construction, five hundred A R C nineteen dash zero five. Is the applicant here?
Pardon me, Mr. Vice Chair, ma'am, I'm well acquainted with the applicant, so I might abuse myself as well.
Does somebody want to speak for the applicant? Someone here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're here, just a, you want to step up, sorry. Request for permit for an addition.
Come right here and let me know who you are.
I'm Charles Barton.
Thank you.
The owner of Barton Construction. We put a request in for Valerie Batista, she's here also, for a remodel, master bedroom and bathroom with a small office space. On the side of the, the master bedroom is about two hundred and fifty square feet, it says two thirty-six, it's two fifty-six actually. The master bedroom is eighty-eight and then their music room is one thirty-four, which is basically a plan.
All right, we'll go to the commission and ask your questions for clarification. Commissioner Krieger?
I, oh yeah, dropped by, seen, dropped by out town a little while ago last night, but just driving by, it appears it's most in the back. I would take it some motivation in the front of the apartment. It appeared to be down to the, the issue from the fifteen site. So I didn't really, didn't seem to hear that quite. I think it's pretty simple, pretty broad.
No questions?
Yeah, I agree, it's very straightforward within the setback. I think it's going to be a nice addition.
I didn't get a chance to actually go and look at it, but close to drop by both sides. How close to the bank is that? There's one section that were about three feet on the edge there. The fence is actually, there's an old part of the fence there, so it sits back. One corner of the master bedroom sits about, I think it's about three feet on just the corner. So I guess that property is short up on that and no danger, then I guess that would be checked, when they do plan check and then back. Yeah, we've done as well as test, they've corded and everything on the property already to make sure that we did everything done, so yeah, we support that corner obviously. There'll probably be a five foot footing instead of a two foot footing in that one section.
Thank you, okay. We'll go to, call the comment, if anybody has a comment on the project. Sorry, I did my stuff together.
Peter, identify yourself. Oh, hi, my name is Jason Johnson, my wife Mary Jane. I am Val's neighbor. Twenty-five years. Next month I'll be living there thirty years. When Mary Jane and I bought that house, the thing that sealed the deal for us was the ocean view. When I saw the story of where it go up, I had some concerns. It's totally taken out my ocean view. I'm not sure if Val is even aware of it because you can come over and see it from my perspective. So I've taken a few photos so I can share it with you, and I'm sorry to give photos for everybody, but maybe you could just pass it along. This is looking from my view, which I covet. The ocean view is gone. Structure is very high, never be able to see the ocean again. The reason I bought the house was the open view. I, I love my neighbor, I hope we can find some kind of agreement here on how constructed. If we're all bringing more concepts, setting, you know something for me. And also, you know, things that come to mind, dropping down as well.
So, anyone else has a comment on the project? Do you two have any questions?
Are there any rules about blocking? You said?
That's a good question.
Yes.
No, no real rules.
Is there any precedent?
I think we've had discussions about them in the past, I don't know if you ever, if not ever been in parts of the rules.
I only came up with the hopes.
We don't think about here, we don't, there aren't a lot of houses that have views of the ocean.
Have you two talked about this from your perspective?
No, actually, I just got the letter on September twenty-sixth and Kathleen just went up a week ago. Val's had some issues with her health as well as I have, so no one's approached me about it. Val and I met at the garbage cans a couple of days ago and had a small conversation about it. I told her that I hadn't been approached about it, so I came down here and got plans myself. Kind of unclear of how it's going to be constructed, I don't know if it's a group or, you know, if that could be explained to me as well. But no one's really told me on their end what they're going to do and, you know what, she probably doesn't, doesn't really realize that it's blocking my view. If you come over and show her for sure. But, you know, I live outside. Mary Jane and I covet that view, we live our life outside, we love the garden, and it's just part of our lifestyle, I believe. So I hope we can figure something else out, I wish she was putting a second story out because that would have any impact on me. But she's going out and keeping up my entire ocean view.
Still happy to admit that we haven't really had any projects in the wild there. Too much conflict, so I'm going to bear with it a little bit here. Karen, is this something that you can go to the applicant and have them respond to something?
You can. What's, what's in front of you though is what's been noticed. You can make conditions on the approval, but you can't make changes to what's there. They would have to come back. Yeah.
And there's also the, always the right to appeal.
And they have the right to appeal. Thank you, Gary, yeah.
So we don't necessarily have the final, this is in mind.
Okay, then I'll have a clean of motion and then we can, we can discuss.
Is there, is there room for Ms. Batista here?
Yes.
Would you, would you like to say anything about this, ma'am?
Yes.
I don't care, I want to hear what you have to say.
Yes, when, basically what it comes down to is my, my home is my only asset and I've lived there for almost thirty years. And it's where I raised my son and it's basically all I have. So when I was looking at ways to make the most of my, of my property, I considered going out because it seemed the least intrusive at the time. I wasn't aware that it was going to block their view and my understanding from the conversation we had last Sunday was that it's a view from a section of their garden where they have a deck and that's basically where the view would be blocked. I was aware of, you know, other things in the past, there was in a different direction from my yard, you know, where I turned a tree or something like that. So I didn't build, I didn't design this with the intention of blocking anyone's view. Basically, what I'm trying to do is, I also have health issues that may result in an earlier retirement than I'd expected and I wanted to have more space in my house. I have twelve hundred square feet right now where I live with a boy and a dog and I simply wanted to have a proper bedroom and bathroom and that's basically all I was, all I was looking to do. Upstairs, going up was something I thought about, but I have arthritis and low hips and so going out seemed the least intrusive and most accommodating in the, in the long run to everyone else in the neighborhood. So that's basically, you know, what it is from my standpoint. I also asked when we had the conversation if it was blocking the view from the house and they said no, it was from outside. And I know my neighbors, they do a lot of beautiful gardening and they spend a lot of time outdoors. So and the way I see it, there may be some things we did work out, but at the same time, I would also like to make the most of the value of my property as well. And that's kind of my standpoint right now.
I just have one question. So from the picture, it looks as though they were taken from a lower angle because it looks like the roof line of the addition is a bit higher than the existing. Is the new addition the same height as the existing structure?
I don't know.
The new addition is actually lower than the peak of the roof. It's about twelve foot to the roof. So there are the flat roofs on the back and this is about two foot higher than that flat roof, but it's lower than actual peak of the existing house.
And is that peak what we see in the picture from what, I guess protrudes from the neighbor's view?
Yeah, the roof we're putting on will be a flat roof.
I, I might help you with that, there's something I took from the roof of my house this morning because I didn't really know what it was going to look like. But this is from top of my roof. Well, I'm confused about where, if it's going to peak and now saying it's a flat structure, I don't even know that. So I really don't understand the plan and I live at a time that I'm a planning guy. Over there, I can look into my roof down into their yard. So I'm really not sure where it's from yet. I can see it from a level of where I am. It looks like it's my property, so you're the contractor, is this as high as the building can go, is that the top of the square?
This is a little deceiving because if you look at the face show right here, it's about two and a half feet above that. That's where the building will be, it's a flat roof, right?
So it's just a, we're a lot.
It's a flat roof, yes.
Okay, I may have, I may be able to answer my own question. So I took a look at the, the plans on the elevation and it appears that the new western elevation is actually going to be lower than what exists right now as I, as I look at it from a profile. South elevation doesn't change. So it appears as though the addition, the overall height is actually lower than what exists right now because it's a flat roof. So maybe it's just that because it protrudes out the way it does in relation to your house, it's blocking your nerve. It's not necessarily the height that's doing it, it's, it's, it's the actual addition that goes to the south end of the property.
Right. Right, the building that's coming out is the ground, yeah.
Right.
There is a way of maybe excavate down or go up or out, I don't know, but, you know, my house with an ocean view and it might, it's still invaluable, you know, I have the same predicament. My, my house is my only asset, I don't have any savings, I'm just a regular guy and I have to protect that and I know my view is part of my value of my property. So I'm going to protect my value as well and I understand her point of view as well, but I too have, trying to protect mine.
I have a bit of experience with this, my next door neighbor, when I did my remodel, we had to go back and forth before I ever finalized my plans. I went back and forth with my neighbor to agree on what I would do with mine. I renovated my house and extended it a little bit. Is there a chance that any of that could take place? Because I see twenty-five years of good neighbors.
Best neighbor ever.
And is there a chance that, and, and my, my other question is, does this have to get done this week?
Not as far as I'm concerned, she may have a schedule with.
If you have anything that's.
And I don't know anything about design and your contractor maybe come up with something.
Yeah, so from the, from the, I guess it's the Barton Construction and our owner, is there, does it have to be done right now? Or is there some time for potentially the two neighbors to talk together and maybe come to some reasonable conclusion that satisfies both? It looks like it might be hard to satisfy both, but at least to give it a shot.
I'm willing to do that.
So, I mean, it seems like we're at the point now where we either prove it, deny it, or ask, Karen, I don't know, we've done this, we have done this in the past, we've discussed it, continuing, I really don't have that many pieces that we want to come back to us, revise.
Present, yeah.
I'm willing to come in for special meetings, whatever it is. You guys can work it out in a week, I'll be back in here next week to have another meeting if you only want to do a week. I know that, I'm just saying I would be willing to do that, but. Yeah.
As the, as the contractor, there's not much more, we've already minimized what we're doing to the extent that, we're going to, I don't know what we would do. We cut four foot off of, off of it or would we lower it to a seven foot roof? I mean, there's really not, you know, much we can do, so whatever they would decide will have to be. Just, just for.
We'll sit back for a motion then. I have a motion to accept it.
Given that there's nothing in the, you know, in our city's standpoint about the view shed, given it needs all the requirements, I think at this point, I'm, I would make a motion to accept A R C number nineteen oh five as written in form of change. You have the opportunity to appeal against the council.
And I, and so, you know, I will be appealing.
Right, no, I understand, I'm saying, but from our standpoint, I don't, in, in the perfect world, it would be nice to make everyone happy, but I'm looking at what we have to work with. I understand, I'm not sure what, when change, because anything that's up there is going to be the same issue. But at this point, given what we have in front of us, I'd make a motion to accept it and before the city council, maybe they, maybe there is something that can work out. We'll see, if not, there's the appeal process, I don't see any reason not to prove that. I am willing to accept it.
Prove the discussion.
Yeah, we, we had a similar issue with this, I believe it was a couple of months ago, a house on Latoya involved fence and some, some other design issues. And that one went forward to the city council. But Gary, Commissioner Krieger makes a great point that there's really nothing within the city ordinances that holds back the applicant or that would just bring about any disapproval because there's an ordinance that's not going to follow. So I, I, I agree, I, I think we agree that we should move forward with it and then let the appeal process work if, if that's the route it goes. I disagree with that. I think that as neighbors, we owe it to each other to work on these things.
Yeah, because it's not going to turn out well.
And I consider it part of my job to make sure that everybody's voice gets heard prior to accepting any building plan or rejecting any building plan. I just heard from two neighbors that you're willing to at least talk to each other. And I personally, at this moment, do not see why a delay in making either the approval or the, or declining this particular permit, I do not see why we can't delay and let the neighbors have a shot at it. You know, that's what I would like to have if I were the one either putting in the permit or the one that is here with the views being blocked. So I, I disagree with approving it, I do understand how the process works, but I think we should give them a chance to work it out before we say yea or nay and send it to the bigger city council.
So if we wanted to continue this.
We have a motion.
You have a motion?
You have the motion.
Let's vote for both then. On second?
Not yet.
Wait a second. On second. On paper.
All right, I'll vote negative on that.
All right, so if you have the appeal process, you have twenty days to it. I hope that the city council will agree to that, so we, you know, see the discussion we have and, so we know the direction we're going to take.
And there's two weeks to vote something out, like Commissioner Burton saying, which is actually, we would all love that. I'm not sure what could happen in two weeks. Yeah, we're down two weeks, probably we're down six weeks. So we have two weeks to, if you can otherwise, process, move on.
Hey, next on you. I have to say this, Steve Avola, owner of Daniella Prue. A R C nineteen F zero six project restriction, request architectural review to impose existing curvative as T four perches, a single paneling, well, and power map materials to match.
I'm, I'm out on this one because I'm too close to the property.
Would you like to give us a restriction for the project?
Yes, I'm Steve Avola, I'm the contractor and the father to Daniella Prue. Yes, I'm Steve Avola, I'm the contractor and the father to Daniella Prue. We are taking on the back elevation of the house. There is a recess on the family room or living room part of the building where there's a sliding glass door and a set of steps. We'd like to bump that wall out to the existing outside perimeter of the building and gain that sixty-four feet for the living space. It is, the roof line is the same, there's no change in the roof. Thank God, there's no view issues or anything that were, of these other things that are happening on this other project. So yeah, it's pretty simple, just bumping the wall out and the back's elevation will be straight across instead of having that recess.
No, just looking at it, it looks like I can't imagine why it would be a problem from, as for someone who's got some kind of issue that in their backyard would be good to see with them street. It looks like it's real critical.
Um, it was a property again, and this is described, sent you a very clear flagging and does not increase the footprint of the building. Another from architectural review standpoints, from perspective of the street. And I actually looked towards all I've joined properties, natural vegetation, borders, and it doesn't look like anyone we've impacted, so.
Yeah, just have one question, so when you look at where the master closet and the master bathroom are, I know you're going to demo the existing in there.
We're going to make those bathrooms bigger.
Right. As you look at the plans, it doesn't show any windows in there. So do you plan on maintaining the, the same windows that you have in front of the bathroom?
I think on the elevation, I'm sorry, my son drew the plan, maybe he didn't. I think the ele, the, I thought the windows were on, but on the elevation it shows the difference. The, the one, the door comes straight out and moves about a foot to the right. And I believe the window in the bathroom moves a little bit on the back elevation.
Okay, but it doesn't show the side elevation, so that window, it's, it, it looks like it's the same size as.
Yeah, I believe that's in the closet.
That will remain?
It'll either remain or it'll go away because it's in a walk-in closet.
Got it.
Sorry, I didn't draw that elevation, sorry about that.
Yeah, so, yeah, very straightforward, very little added to it other than enclosing that, that porch.
Yeah, the small home of sixty-four feet makes a big difference.
Yeah, and, and it, and it stays in line with the existing walls as well, so, yeah, I don't see any issue.
Want to vote for comment on this project? Any other questions?
Motion that we approve, um, under A R C number nineteen dash zero six, since our question under thirty-one, two, dash, five, nine, nine, one, dash, zero, zero, one. And move as one of ours.
Second? All paper.
All right.
Close? Yeah, there's a twenty day appeal period, so.
Gary, do you mind getting Doug and George please? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The item before you is an information item only, no decision is required tonight. The, the purpose of, of meeting with you tonight is to address how we process requests to alter the public space. Since I started here, we've, we've had a, a good run of, of people that wanted to take some pride in ownership of public space. We called up the Adopt an Island program. And throughout the city, there's been some great stuff done with regard to landscaping, beautification, real ownership in, in the civic space. But what I've, what I've found is, is that we, we don't have a process. The process really is the city manager approving or disapproving something based on my best judgment. And as we, as we see an increase in groups that want to do good in the public space. Frankly, it was, we're even planning commissioners, give credit where credits due here. Commissioner Donaldson suggested that we, we put this into, into a public channel process. And frankly, I couldn't agree more because I, I, I grow frankly uncomfortable with, with having to make decisions on what is and isn't allowed to be done in public space. In what many may seem, uh, see as a fairly arbitrary decision-making process. And that's the last thing that we need or want in the city, especially as, as people want to do good things in, in the city. And so I've spoken with staff, I've spoken with the city attorney. And the, the thought is to use our conditional use permit process to allow applicants to suggest changes to the public space, whether they be in our islands or whether they be in our parks or other green space. Just as you hear conditional use permit requests from, from anyone else. And that the C U P process would have the application and the associated information that we, that we generally require from applicants, which is how things look now. How things will look in the future once the project or, or change is, is undertaken. And, and a brief description of the project. And that that be agendized with the planning commission for presentation and deliberation amongst the commissioners. And then approval or not with conditions associated with the use of the public space as you deem appropriate in compliance with municipal code. I think that we feel strongly as staff that what we are trying to do here is promote a public transparent process rather than create obstacles. And so we will be going to the city council to suggest an amendment to, an amended fee schedule to allow projects for public benefit to, to either have a reduced or no fee associated with the C U P application. That's a separate issue we'll take up with the city council. But what I wanted to do tonight was start a discussion with the public. And I've talked this over with the mayor and I've talked this over with several council members, several of you commissioners and with certain members of the public that, that were currently engaged in with, with some discussions about a project. And have a discussion, answer any questions you might have. And then ultimately, we will have a, a first project that comes before you. I, I certainly don't want to go back and require things that have been done in the public space to retroactively have to come before this commission. That's not my intent at all. So this, this would be looking forward and not backward. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
This question is loaded with a statement upfront. I am usually not a fan of additional red tape in any form, manner. But in this case, I can see the argument that you're making. And it's, uh, it's interesting, my question is, would we be provided something I might call a baseline? Here's all the public space, um, planning commission as a baseline. This is where we're at, anticipating suggestions for change. Would we be provided that baseline?
That's a terrific question and, and I, my, my initial thought to it is that the more, the more context we can provide for a project, the better. And staff is certainly willing to do that and, and would do it. The particulars of how we do that, the timing, we'll have to work out. But I think we, we certainly owe it to the commission to, to describe the lay of the land and what's out there and how a particular project fits into that, into the overall city space.
Yeah, so my follow-up question to the baseline question is, and I, I think this is a city council issue, not, not probably ours. But my question is, what resources will be required to do something we may call baseline? Is it a hundred staff hours? Is it, I, I, would we have to contract somebody to, this is my concern, is that there would have to be a decent amount of resources involved in that. And it's probably a, really a city council question, but I'm interested in that.
Commissioner, I think the initial take will be a, a staff review of what we think will be required to do, have a, a description of public space for, for, for the commission. And then assess how much, how many man-hours that might take. My, my initial thought is this isn't terribly time intensive. It may be depending on what your questions are and how much we want to drill down into it. And we'll have to take that as it comes, but the initial review, I think, would be, you know, a decent map with, with spaces highlighted and a description of what's, what's currently happening.
I like to reduce fees, that's good, positive, that's my, that was, that's kind of like my, I like reduced fees, I like less red tape. So let's streamline it as best we can and thank you for listening to me.
Yeah, no, no question, just in, in line with the fee schedule, some things that you might also want to commit, consider, or we might also want to consider is eliminating some of the other requirements that, that private owners have, which is the, the survey, the site survey, the topographic survey. And making sure that that survey is within certain standards. Because we, we pretty much know where the city property is, the limits of it. And, and it, it really would be duplicating effort if, if we were to include that on a, on an item that, that was regarding public space.
I'm favorable, I, I like the idea of the transparency and true taken lock, you're maybe wanting to play around with that, I don't know. But it would use, kind of, kind of reduce the brand new fee, but, but the reduced.
First and foremost, Mr. City Manager, I'd just like to say that in my opinion, the awareness of public space use of has been gold star all the way. And it's been nothing short of progressive, uh, any, every citizen's best interest, uh, for all of us, you know. But absolutely, I'm all for it. More light comes through two windows than, or more than one. And so everyone in our, in our public, our neighborhoods has a voice and they deserve to be heard as well.
Got any questions?
All right, so, I mean, I think the process is, is a good idea, just a couple of questions. You talked about altering, I guess you probably want to come up with some threshold or something. I tend to think of us as structures, you know, things, not what Scott's done or Susan's done or, or Cag and the banks and plants. And I mean, that, I know there's been talk of a Parks and Rec meeting. I think this is something that would be more in their purview as far as if there's nothing being built. I think it's more of a Parks and Rec function as opposed to a planning commission. A lot of where we're at in that discussion, I just, I've, I've sort of bubbled up here and there a few times. If that's something that's on the horizon, I would think maybe we should think about incorporating that into their purview. Because that would be right in the wheelhouse as opposed to our, not the good ones, but, but that's just one thought. So I love the, the no fee, I think anything, someone's going to come here and, I mean, I see them, these guys have done, trying to cross from my street. They're always out there working, I've seen them, Susan's done, Sam and the cat, I mean, if they're going to put in that, that much split equity, we shouldn't argue a penny. To make that table, I, I mean, I would wish the council to make it by no fee. So they're saving us money, maybe sitting in the wheelhouse. So that'd be that one thing is if, if there is something in works, in a, you know, standing up a Parks and Rec committee, I would want to maybe at least think about their, you know, their, their main, let's put it that way, but in general, good idea.
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great point, I just want to address the Parks and Rec commission idea. So council has asked staff to look at that and, and we will. I think it'll be, it'll be real, and I think that there is merit in having a baseline, a sort of a threshold above which a project needs to come to, to the planning commission. And I think in, in general, in my mind, it's something above basic landscape. Whether it includes some kind of permanent structure, some kind of lighting, some kind of alteration that is beyond basic landscape. We probably, we need to define that.
Right, that's, that's kind of my thought, there should be some threshold that, if you did that, that would be included in the plan.
Yep.
Yes, it is, no, the left, you're right.
Yep, and then, and then it'll be interesting to see how things proceed with the planning commission. With regard to, to projects that do exceed that threshold, do come before you. And that I think will help us inform, uh, inform us as we look at what authorities we think a, a Parks and Rec commission needs to have. And how they might be differentiated from the planning commission. So I appreciate all.
Well, it's sort of, I mean, Scott mentioned, keep it simple and then another committee just, I mean, makes a little bit, another step more complicated. Whether that could be made simple, I don't know. I have a concern with the cost to the city, I would assume group is coming to us. Or any kind of construction or modification would be done by them and not the city. As far as, and then I think about lighting and water or something like that, that would maybe come out of our, out of the city's funds. I don't know how that would work, that would, that would matter as a, a annual force.
Right, and so on this, that's a really important point, right? Monterey has a program called the Neighborhood Improvement Program whereby they get millions of dollars a year that goes into neighborhood determined projects to build. None of that money goes to maintenance, right? So every year, there are projects after project after project that are increasing the amount of parks and recreation sort of infrastructure in the city. That the Parks and Rec department then has to maintain over time. And so, you know, it's just a tiny example of that for us is we had an Eagle Scout put in a bench at, on the Rosita Triangle. It was great, no cost to the city, nice bench, three benches. A car lost control and ran over the bench. There's no Eagle Scout to come back and put the bench in place, Ron did it. The city ate the cost and we're happy to do it. But the point is, is that the maintenance requirements of these projects are met. And we'll, we'll keep that in mind as we, uh.
Next question, when they give a group, they want to do a project, um, as far as grants from the state, would they, I have no clue how that is all done. Would, I'm just guessing that they would have to form a group that be, had Citizens Action Group and apply for a grant to do modifications. So could they do that with Delaware Oaks property, I don't know.
I think we'd have to look at the particular grant requirements. But I certainly appreciate and welcome any resident group reaching out for, for external grants, whether they be local grants or, or state and federal grants.
Because back again, I wouldn't want the city to have to do money, do work to apply for grants for, for, and keep funds down, cost to the city to minimal, too.
Could I ask, have we spent any money upfront, I mean, I would tend to be interested with that. Have we spent any money for any improvements so far or that is, you know, it's done?
Uh, it would be limited, it would be limited to Ron's labor time. Doing some fairly limited work on, on the, the islands. That's the only cost that, that comes to mind.
Okay, so far the people have said they've been bored, they've just been making their.
Absolutely, which has been great.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a young project on Watson Seamesters, and I, the woods watered there, it was capped off, and I don't know why, basically we put a faucet there, and so that was the main thing, so that was a small effect, because it was already warm.
Right, right.
I suppose we'd have to look at project by project, there's always a liability to pass through.
So the other bit to this, thank you for raising that, the other bit to this that the city attorney has brought to our attention is, we are going to have volunteers working in the public space and to sign a liability waiver. It doesn't fully indemnify, you can still sue the city, but it's going to become a step that we, that we put in there that, you know, again, is very simple, goes on file, but I'm glad that is a layer of protection.
I got one more, hearing the other commissioners say a couple of things, I have caution and one more question. Caution is about this idea of a threshold, and I say caution because I feel as though one of the most important things that happen at every one of our meetings is that we always allow the public comment. That number four, which it usually is number four on our list, that's probably one of the most important things we have. So that's, everyone has a chance if they want to come and say things. So my caution would be about setting up thresholds that deny that idea of a public comment, or something like that. Doesn't mean someone still can't go to city council and raise it as an off-agenda issue, it can happen. But I like it baked into the formal process, as part of that goes. So that's my caution, and my question is, now that you've opened up the can of worms, city manager, and you started this whole thing with, I'm not comfortable just making these decisions on my own. Would you give us an example or two about decisions that you made would fall into this, fall into this public area management?
Well, I'll give you an example of, I'll give you two examples.
Please.
And one was a little older and one is more contemporary. One example is the work that was done on the corner of Carlton Carlton. You know, again, we were excited to have residents sort of adopting that space and doing some good things. We had a resident put in plants, put in a bench with some concrete footings, and then we had, then we had the plants removed. And so that created some churn with the public work staff and with the city, and sort of started me thinking. More recently, what we have is a wonderful new organization, Sustainable Delray Oaks. They've approached the city to do a butterfly garden down by the tennis court, and the dynamics at play there are a bit more complex than we've had in projects heretofore. We have the mayor personally involved, we have groups outside of the city coming in and advocating strongly for a project, and being willing to work and bring funds to that project. This is Save the Waves. And as we looked at the parcel, the potential parcels, and arrived at an area down by the tennis courts, there were conflicting, potential conflicts with other projects, in putting it there. One conflict may be with a potential future expansion of the Delray Garden Center, which is adjacent to the tennis courts there, and the owner has plans to expand that business, which is thriving, does very well in our city, and the expansion space that he's looking at is very near or on the same ground where the potential butterfly garden would go. We have a approved project and funded project from Tamsi, which is the four-door regional recreational trail on Greenway, currently going through environmental review. And depending on how that environmental review goes and the design of that trail, the trail may or may not come right through where, adjacent to the butterfly garden, and it may be a very symbiotic relationship, a wonderful butterfly garden adjacent to a recreational trail that has, again, symbiotic relationship, or not, depending on how things go. Things appear to be going in the direction of a symbiotic relationship. So, once I got, once I found myself at the eye of that mix, it started to resonate with me that this needs a public process, it needs something transparent, that allows for full vetting, for you to hear from all sides, just as you did from two residents that disagreed pretty strongly about a pretty straightforward project, and that will allow, for whatever the outcome is, to potentially be appealed to the city council, and for, again, to be public recourse. So that's, that's an example of a, one that's recent. There have been conversations about public art and potentially, you know, paying picnic tables and putting public art in parks and whatnot, and again, that goes beyond, it is so subjective that I find myself very, very, again, uncomfortable, having to make a call as to what right looks up. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a great question, because you were saying, I was sort of waffling, you know, Parks and Rec, and you picked him up on that, sounds like it would be way more complicated than just the Parks and Rec thing. Yeah, that sounds good, so.
Is it, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak or ask a question? Good.
Pat Littell, Rosie U. Road, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. These are just issues that I think should be thought about in whatever the final results are. Should it be temporary, like in the case of where there's two people, one that would be paying additional rent to us versus residents who want something that is very good? But if the permit to use this is temporary, and the city was able to revoke that or terminate it at any time for a purpose that would bring revenue to the city, we need, we need money, our debts are still humongous, and so, so how you would do that? Would you make it for the permit valid for X number of days? Or would you maybe say thirty days' notice that we're taking back the property? So there's many aspects on the permanency of any such permit, and whether there would be structures built on this, that makes it even a little bit more complicated. You would, then addressing the charge, would the city would charge for the permit? And, and the, I think it's important that this would have no cost to the city. I don't know how you would provide lighting or water and so on, without the city being charged for this? I don't know. But these are just things that I think should be considered in making any final decisions on how the permitting process should be. Thank you very much.
Just a quick on that, I think those probably would be, the city council to decide, not moving, implementing it, we're not going to be, the city council is going to have open, where we put the place, put the place, right? We're not, well, decide permanently and things like that, that's open, what the city council is going to be deciding, right? We're not deciding what we're going to do, right, it's going to go to the city council.
Well, I think, I think that if it needs to go to the city council, it will. But I think the purview of the planning commission to put conditions on a conditional use permit is squarely within your purview to do.
Okay, I mean, that was in the beginning, I thought you were taking this to the council, I thought you were saying.
We're going to take the fees to the council.
Okay.
And any other decision that requires council approval.
Obviously length of temporary versus length of permit, I think, obviously, all, if we need to, at least in that discussion.
It might, I think, frankly, I think we, staff would first sort of take a swing at that with planning commission, because again, we've conditioned other use permits with all sorts of conditions, and I think you could condition any of these permits similarly. If there's, if there's a need for council guidance, we'll absolutely go to the council for it. But I think that the only thing we currently plan to go to council for is fee waivers.
Okay.
After the vote, we commented, we'll have any questions, so we won't be then affected for itself. Sue?
Good evening, my question, I'd like to clear the air and give a hundred percent factual representation of what happened on the Carlton Triangle. I spent a couple thousand dollars putting in plants and a bench, and probably hundreds of hours of work, and I enjoyed it very much. And one morning when I was looking out my window, I saw Jim and Kristen Clark putting up a Jerry banner, and I walked across the street and I informed them if they put up the banner, a political sign next to my plants and work, that I would no longer be able to take care of it. They told me I could do whatever I want, but they were still going to put up the banner. I walked home, by the time I got home, there was a policeman in front of my, my front door telling me that they had called the cops and said that I had threatened to vandalize the sign. I am not a vandalizer. I was very angry, so yes, I did rip out all the plants because I felt like, how could they say a falsehood about me? I have never said a falsehood about them, and I am a golden rule kind of a person. So that is exactly what happened, and every time I posted on Nextdoor to explain the situation, the post was removed, and I found out who was doing that. So, so in the meantime, after the election, and we had a positive outcome, I worked with my neighbor who said that he would no longer put political signs up there, and that I was free to live on his property, you know, please. So that's my story, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Real. Come on down.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Karen Harris, I'm on Rosita Road, and I've been wanting to try to help out the commission with developing some guidelines moving forward as you start looking at how to use these public open spaces. So I went through some of the things that we have already in place, that you can use as a resource. So I thought one of the ways that you should move forward is to try to prioritize the projects based on the city established zoning ordinances already. So for example, some R1 and D are residential, and C1B is zoned for city parkland. So the allowed uses within these areas would be different, quite different, right? So a commercial retail business would not be permitted in either residential area or a city parkland. And a public garden, for example, could be preferred in a city parkland more than in a residential zone. So that's one way to start looking at it, prioritizing. Consider developing criteria to prioritize projects in the city open spaces such as, where are we going to have income to the city, leases and rents and tax revenues, that's important. We don't want to have cost to the city, materials, labor, maintenance, we talked about that, anything ongoing. Prevention of stormwater runoff to meet our stormwater permit, that would be a plus if we were able to accomplish that. Whether the project is temporary or permanent, so we're going to weigh that out. The liability, if any, hopefully, there won't be any, sign that waiver. The value to the residents, that's in our general use permit to, general plan. Our value to wildlife protection, grant funding, if other funds are going to be coming in to help pay for the project, that would help the city to decide. And is there any other public support or objections to a project? So, we also want to align with the city general plan. So Parks and Recreation Goals and Policies, which I have summarized in the pages sixty and sixty-one, and pages eighteen, are to reduce traffic, pedestrian-friendly areas, bike and pedestrian pathways, public service areas, when you have access to them, active recreational areas, passive open spaces. So these are things that are already in our general plan, which are goals, so we don't need to recreate them. And that's for Parks and Recreation. Now, for open space goals, we want to protect our natural resources, preserve our water qualities, preserve our open spaces, not be developing more commercial buildings on an open space. We want to look at water conservation, conserve your wildlife corridors. For instance, when you go up to the area next to the tennis courts, you can see the wildlife tracks and the turkey trap, or right, they roost right underneath that oak tree next to the church. So we want to also provide protection mitigation impacts to the wetlands. So if we were to move any other project down into the area where the wetlands is behind Safeway, that would not be in, compatible, I'm sorry, with the open space policies and goals. So the land use element is to enhance beauty, health and safety, and strive for village atmosphere and plan for additional village visitor services facilities. And some of these projects that we were talking about, like the butterfly garden, would provide those services and provide a lot of the needed goals that you want to check off with your general plan. And the circulation element, that's the same thing with the bikeways and bike paths. So as far as the permitting requirements, the building permit, I think there's an exemption to the landscaping, if it's just landscape and not to a building. So if that's the case, then perhaps it could just go through the design review board, you already have. And those guidelines would just be for aesthetic, aesthetics, conformity, and the other issues that we talked about. As far as use permits and conditional use requirements, we could work those out, I think, with what's existing already. So I don't think it's going to be really difficult to try to make some really good decisions moving forward. And if I can help in any way, please let me know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so, do we have any comments?
No, thank you. Yeah, I think whether it's private property or city-owned property, this is definitely within our charter, it's consistent with what we do. If you look at chapter seventeen of the zoning ordinance, you can see in there that our requirement is to focus on aesthetics and visual appearance of projects. And, you know, we have some easy ones sometimes, like the second one we had today, and we have some harder ones, like the first one. And I can imagine that within city projects, you're going to have something similar to that. You're going to have some that are more extensive, that will require a lot of comment back and forth by the commission and by the public, and that's an opportunity to take all those concerns into consideration by a body that's appointed for the city through the city council. So I just think it's really part of what we already do. If you look into the zoning ordinance, just to show you, under chapter seventeen, it talks about purpose and objective, and it says, "The objective is to preserve the natural beauty of Delray Oaks and protect the visual character and charm of the city by ensuring that structures, signs and other improvements are properly related to their sites and to the surrounding sites and structures, with due regard to aesthetic qualities of natural terrain and landscaping, and that proper attention is given to the exterior appearance of structures, signs and improvements." And it also includes plots and landscaping, so I just, I mean, I look at it and really, going through this process, once again, whether it's a private property or city-owned, it just ensures that all those things are happening. And then the last piece of it, it says that it makes sure that. And then the, the last piece of it, it says that it makes sure that, that structures, improvements are in harmony with, with the surrounding area and it's not undesirable or unsightly appearance. But I, I just think that, that we can, we can do all that regardless of where the project will be.
There's a lot of this process in place, the conditional use process is there. So you're just basically moving it off of your desk over here.
Commissioner Donaldson, just around the section, to our neighbor, Mr. Tell's point, we, we do actually have certain use permits, typically a date is set on the expiration of the use permit, and if not, then it's good for the duration of one year. So I would assume that anything that was established structurally or landscape-wise, it became a real staple within the protected longevity, and after that year, an extension could have been, this would be good. Are we doing general comments as to just, certainly at this point, have a general comment? Just because I think as we've already gone after the phone, so. Is it, is it concerned with this?
No.
Okay. We, we able to comment?
You know, I guess hopefully we'll just keep in mind as we're going through here, keep all people to go with great work, doing, and not good, sort of lots of, even in, just be mindful of that. Like, once again, this, we've all watched the last two, three years of these islands have just become my source and, wow, all the time, I've got something for my house now. And they'll pop up all over the city and they're growing. And I just, just want to make sure we say them right, so that we don't want to get in the way of people that are willing to put in the hard work and, and to, you know.
Well, I can't disagree with that, but the islands were already, just making them perfect. It sounds like it would get a little bit more complicated than just some plants on the island. The, Scott mentioned something about, I was on the table, but I forgot about it. But, yeah, I like it and it should be a pretty nice sort of branding, trying to think of what I was going to say. That, yeah, it, it will get complicated and the process, we can draw if something becomes a problem or a nuisance, which I can't think that it would, but it can be redraw in any context, a conditional use permit. And as far as just landscaping, you know, unfortunately, you've got to sort of draw a line somewhere. And we just can't say, oh, okay, landscaping is okay, we've got a post here, and we'll just have to say from here on out, give them a new permit. My only suggestion would be, is the groups that want to put in some plants, if they have a bigger idea, make sure that's on the table. Rather than coming to us one time and saying, you know, we'll put up some plants and some grass. And then three months later, well, we'll put a bench. And, you know, have a, have a general plan of what you want to do for a longer period of time. We can, as a group, look at the bigger picture, everything, piece of stuff that you may not look at in the long run as an overall, you can see a bigger picture.
You kind of raised that point, and I wondered if you, if you begin to develop that review aspect of this, sometimes some group may not be able to do all of that.
Well, that would be in the public comment too. As you mentioned, there could be, I think, a lot of, yeah, I agree with the architecture review, but I would hope that it wouldn't get into that big of a, butterfly, central area or everything, too big of a, but, but, no. Any other comments? Under the public, any questions or anything? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to announcements from the commission. Doug?
I think I've got all my announcements in for that. Thank you.
Scott?
No.
Well, you know.
I've been very excited since last week, I attended some events.
So Gary, how was your?
I attended Moderation Community Power, maybe at the old Meyer Center a couple of weekends ago, where C. Manager Pick was present, as was council member L. Tell. So that was interesting to attend. Also the Pure Water Gray Oak Living Ceremony at the Green Coast Water District facility there. Amazing to see how they're taking some more sources of reclaimed water, stormwater, agro law, ag processing, and everybody's favorite wastewater and making it delicious, potable water. Future is here with that, so that was, that's an event. And I wanted to thank Scott on the commission and hereby a public level also, sort of relative to what we've just been discussing, also establishing landscaping with some longevity in his plan hundred of oak trees and keep us the city of Delray Oaks versus just the city of, of Delray in record time, greater than anticipated. So kudos to you and thank you from all of us, I'm sure, for beautification efforts to our good city. And notes to self, research grants for other use areas, and that, I guess, no.
Okay. Mike?
No.
How about you?
That water does taste good. Don't be afraid of it, it gets here, it's perfect.
Thank you. Eric, your comments are always appreciated. I really appreciate you doing this for a lot of reasons, you were part of the group too, so. I was here, unfortunately, I had to wait out in Europe with people others following my best footsteps in Europe versus the picnic. I'm sorry for your trip, but I did hear the picnic was a great success. Got to have this bench out there with the poy tree, so we made a record, built our hundred trees, so I'm very happy to see that go through. So with that note, our next meeting is November thirteenth. Hope to see everybody there. Evening, gentlemen.